November thirteenth, special council meeting will please come to order. I ask everyone to please stand for the prayer, or excuse me, for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is the special council meeting to discuss ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Present.
Mr. Stutcher?
Present.
Mr. Edwards?
Present.
Ms. Hausfeld?
Here.
Mr. Schulteimer?
Present.
Mr. Colbertson?
Present.
And Mr. Estep.
Present.
Let the record show that all seven members are present. At this time, clerk, will you please give the ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five its second reading?
Ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, amending sections one eighty-two point twenty-one and one, and one eighty-two point ninety-nine of the Saint Bernard codified ordinances regarding registration with the Saint Bernard Tax Administrator's Office.
These don't seem to be on. We have light. Yep. But no one. Not working? No. Nope, the light's on. Anybody up there here? Nope.
Yeah, it's.
It's coming through here, but not here. Okay, all right, then we'll go with that.
All right, check the mics.
All right, I believe I was in the process of saying, you gave it its second reading. Members of council, what is your pleasure on ordinance number twenty-six?
Mr. President?
Mr. Schulteimer?
I'll make a motion to suspend with the third reading of ordinance number twenty-six.
Seconded.
Motion by Mr. Schulteimer, seconded by Mr. Morton, to suspend with the third reading of ordinance number twenty-six. Clerk, will you please call the roll on suspension?
Mr. Morton?
Aye.
Mr. Stutcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Hausfeld?
Aye.
Mr. Schulteimer?
Aye.
Mr. Colbertson?
Aye.
And Mr. Estep.
Aye.
Let the record show, seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. Members of council, what is your pleasure on adoption of ordinance twenty-six?
Mr. President?
Mr. Schulteimer?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Schulteimer, seconded by Mr. Edwards, to adopt ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Morton?
Aye.
Mr. Stutcher?
Aye.
Mr. Edwards?
Aye.
Ms. Hausfeld?
Aye.
Mr. Schulteimer?
Aye.
Mr. Colbertson?
Aye.
And Mr. Estep.
Aye.
Seven ayes, no nays, motion carries. Ordinance number twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five is adopted as written. All right, at this time, we will move to the regular committee of the whole meeting. We've already done roll calls, so we'll go with that. Council, what is your pleasure on the written minutes of the October twenty-third council meeting?
Mr. President?
Mr. Schulteimer?
Like to make a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes? Or, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Schulteimer, seconded by Mr. Estep, to approve the written minutes of the October twenty-third council meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. I have on the agenda, and I know there's going to be more, but the thing I had when I had the agenda typed, discuss ordinance twenty-eight, contracting with Hamilton County for the Building Department Services. Who does that fall under? Mark, Valerie?
Valerie's not here.
Jonathan?
I can certainly talk about that. Jonathan might get some to add as well. So, we have identified the Hamilton County Building Department as a very viable option to handle our building services and serve as our chief building official. The reasoning behind this, it's been in the works for some time, but they offer a deep level of experience. They have multiple building inspectors who can go out and perform duties for us. And it'll just be a more consistent process. They currently, the way they would be compensated is through the building inspection fees. There would not be any direct billing to the village. It would all go directly through the county. Any permit, they would not even review it until they knew that it had passed our zoning. So that is something that our zoning administrator, A.J. Schuyer, will have to process and will have to approve before they would look at or even consider the permit. But we have talked to other jurisdictions that are using them. They are very happy with them and feel that the service is superior to what they've had in the past.
Mr. President?
Mayor?
So just to highlight a little more, as far as what Mark stated, again, this has been in the process for some time, at least the researching of it, and we've had a good working relationship with Jerry Stoker and X-Pex, but it was just time to look for some other options. And the resources available through Hamilton County are tremendous. I feel that we'll be in a much better position. And once you're a partner with Hamilton County, we would be able to, you know, be the recipient on demand of certain services. So when we have a situation, if you have a car into a building and this requires a structural engineer, X-Pex doesn't have that. So Hamilton County would provide that on demand. I feel it's going to be more efficient. You know, their online portal, as far as for, you know, uploading documents and actually doing majority of the work online is going to be much more efficient than what we have available. So ultimately, I think it's the right decision. We will still maintain, you know, code enforcement and zoning, and we have a tremendous individual in-house now. Again, that was part of our services that we had contracted through X-Pex to provide all of that. But it was a good trade-off to bring someone in-house for one part of it, for the code enforcement and the zoning, but now to contract through Hamilton County for the resources available. And I ultimately think it's the right decision.
Any questions from anyone on council?
Mr. President?
Mr. Schulteimer?
It might say it in here, when would, if it was approved, when would it take effect?
January one.
So any permit submitted after January one would go through this? Or would they take on all the permits?
That is correct. The goal would be to close out as many of the permits as possible before then, but there could be some overlap. And our contract with X-Pex actually does last through March. But I've talked to Jerry Stoker. He understands the situation, and we would be able to start transferring the permit process January one.
Anybody else?
Mr. President?
Mr. Morton?
Do we have an accurate understanding of this, if this will cost us more or less versus what we're currently doing? Or is that something too hard to predict since it's a by situation basis?
Mr. Oh, well, well, Mr. President, as far as, sorry, and then you backed this up. I mean, the one easy decision is the fact that we're not going under contract with Hamilton County for any kind of an established fee. They're absorbing, they're being compensated through the permitting. So we're not paying, we're not going to be paying another professional consultant or another professional to, for a retainer of any type, like what we had to do. We're not being, we're not paying billable hours for review of service and plan review, that kind of thing. I mean, it's all done. They absorb every bit of it. So it's, it's the best possible situation we could possibly have.
It's purely money saving.
It is. Mr. President, sorry.
You're good.
It is, yes, in one aspect, so for the permitting that we're absorbing. But, you know, we're, there's not a savings in the sense that, because we've brought a full-time person on for code enforcement and zoning, but there was an established need and a definite need to have someone full-time and not part-time like we were contracting through X-Pex. So there's a bit of a trade-off. It will balance out almost, you know, based, we're, so overall, there's not going to be a real savings, but we brought on a full-time person and basically contracted with Hamilton County for about the same amount of money. I don't know if that's.
Mr. Morton? Yeah, that absolutely answers it, because what I'm hearing is we are kind of staying even in terms of like our expenses dedicated towards us, if any, but we're getting more services, especially with A.J. joining on board. So I think it's a no-brainer.
Anyone else?
Sorry, I'll shut up.
I'll entertain a motion to place ordinance number twenty-eight on the table then for the next meeting.
Mr. President?
Mr. Schulteimer?
I'll make a motion to place ordinance number twenty-eight on the table for the next meeting.
Seconded.
Motion by Mr. Schulteimer, seconded by Mr. Morton, to place ordinance number twenty-eight on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. While we're on it, and since the law director is ill this evening, ordinance twenty-seven would be for the solid waste collection fee for residential accounts for the year two thousand twenty-six. Kind of self-explanatory, we do this every year. Any comments from council? Mr. Morton?
Mr. President, we had our finance committee meeting yesterday where we got to review the entire proposed budget for two thousand twenty-six while also reviewing the budget that we're currently working with. And I can tell you that I remember having this conversation with residents a year ago about the necessity of this fee. And what I can tell you with one hundred percent confidence is that this fee is even more necessary now than it has ever been. So I just wanted to share that, just given the timeliness of our finance committee meeting yesterday, that I'm absolutely in support of this, because this is the smartest fiscal decision that we can make.
Anyone else? Then I will entertain a motion we place ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five on the table next council meeting.
Mr. President?
Mr. Schulteimer?
I'll make a motion to place ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five on the table for the next council meeting.
Seconded.
A motion by Mr. Schulteimer, seconded by Mr. Morton, to place ordinance number twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-five on the table for the next council meeting. Are there any other remarks? If not, Mr.?
We do need to get a renewal contract ordinance on the next council meeting for alloy development. They serve as the village's economic development agent.
Which is ordinance twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, I figured, I didn't, I thought you'd do it under your report, so I'll, so, well, hold on here. So there's a motion and a second for the ordinance twenty-seven. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. All right, since Mr. Wendling brought this up, you going to explain any more, any other comment on it, or?
I can just tell you, it is a contract that we maintain with them for economic development services. They help us with retention of our current businesses. They also market vacant properties and vacant buildings to potential tenants. So they're our economic development partner. I think they provide a valuable resource to us, and it makes it so that we do not have to provide a position like that in-house. So it is a cost savings.
Any remarks from anyone?
Mr. President?
Mr. Schulteimer?
I was just curious, is it the same, are we just extending the same contract, the same language or cost?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Then once again, I will entertain a motion to place ordinance twenty-nine on the table for the next council meeting.
Mr. President?
Mr. Schulteimer?
I'll make a motion to place ordinance number twenty-nine on the table for the next council meeting.
Seconded.
Motion by Mr. Schulteimer, seconded by Mr. Morton, to place ordinance twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. All right. I think that pretty much knocks that out. So what is not on your agenda, but I didn't get an answer till late tonight. I have given everybody a committee assignment page. We have conflicting sources on how these are set. So in our rules of council, the president of council sets the committee assignments, and I was told late this afternoon, but I had already made these up, so I'll leave it up to the committee on committees once we're done. But our codified ordinances, section one twenty-one point one zero, states that the committee on committees will make the committee assignments. In talking to Valerie, we will address it next year with an ordinance to, it's, you can't have two conflicting things. So since an ordinance supersedes our rules of council, I leave it up to, and just so everyone knows, the committee on committees are Mr. Schulteimer as the president pro tem, Mr. Colbertson, and Mr. Morton. So I laid this out to them before the meeting. So if you three gentlemen have any comments, and if everyone's good with this and you guys want to go with it, I'm just doing what I'm doing because of a previous lawsuit that we had. So it is now at an open meeting, and it's up to you guys to make the decision, I guess.
Mr. President?
Mr. Mayor?
So your preference is to not have the mayor choose the committees?
Well, that's, you could, we'll discuss that for the new ordinance that will be passed next year. So what's everybody's? Mr. President? Mr. Colbertson?
I'm fine with this committee, with these committees, I'm fine with my responsibilities.
I forgot to preface this. So typically, on inauguration day, since we just had an election, we read the committee assignments at the inauguration meeting. And that's why, that's in three, four, three weeks, I guess. So that's kind of why I started working on it without getting an answer back, so I'll leave it up to you guys. Mr. Morton?
Mr. President, so if I understand this correctly, are we looking to vote to approve this tonight?
If, I don't know.
Or vote on this tonight?
If you simply give the okay, then I will keep it and read it on.
Informal.
I will get with the new member of council who is here after the meeting, and if everybody's good with it, we'll.
Mr. President?
Ms. Hausfeld?
I don't have a problem with the committees that I'm on, and everything looks good. The one problem I have, and this is no regards to the new council person, but I've been up here since two thousand five, with the exception of maybe two years that I was not elected. And it was always brought to where the new people got to sit in one and two seats versus the last seat. And no offense, but I think I've earned the right to finally sit in the last seat for a change. And if we have to, I mean, I don't mind staying on safety, but if we have to change it a little bit, it's where I'm in the last seat, that's where I want to be. That's my only preference.
I'll change the whole agenda for the council meetings, because we voted a few years back that we sit the way that the committees are read at a council meeting. There's no preferential anymore, all that, all that's been thrown out. We voted a couple of years ago to do it according to, if you'll look at tonight's agenda, we go right down the line, Mr. Morton's finance, Mr. Stutcher's. So that's, so if we need to switch safety to the end to make you happy, then I guess we'll just, if everybody's in favor of that, we'll change the council agenda and the committee of the whole agenda.
Mr. President?
Doesn't matter to me, this is my last two years. I don't mean to be blunt, but it is.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Morton?
I, and I don't mean to be argumentative with you, and I'm not just saying this because I am one of the newer members here. I think we should be removing all sources of hierarchy that we can, whether it be of seniority, whether it be whatever reason. I think verbalizing and establishing some sort of hierarchy based off of what seat we're sitting in seems a bit juvenile. I don't, I don't think it's a, I don't think it's the best thing for us, the best way for us to be spending our time worrying about seating assignments. And I don't mean for that to come across aggressively, but it sounds like it's going to be a heavy lift to restructure our agendas. I don't, I absolutely do not think that we should be choosing which committees we are chairing based off of which literal chair we want to sit in. And I don't, I'm not saying that that's what you are doing, but that is what would be needed to avoid the heavy lift that Steve described, if that makes sense. So I feel, I want you to know that we all respect your position here, whether you're sitting here, or you're sitting there, or you're sitting all the way over to the right. I want to verbalize that, that you're respected being here regardless of where you're sitting.
And just my two cents, I would have to refer back to section one twenty-one. I didn't look at it that closely, I read through it to see the wording on that, but we may have to change that whole ordinance just because of that, because I think that lays out the same flow of committees in that ordinance as it does in the assignments and the agendas.
Mr. President?
Ms. Hausfeld?
Call me Patty if you want, but first of all, when I did get elected back in two thousand five, I was told, because I was a minority, that I did not have a choice of the matter. The, the party that was in charge got to dictate to us where we sat. There is no party in charge no more. And so, point blank, I have sat in one, I've sat in two, I've sat in three, and I think I deserve a right to finally sit towards the end. I don't even care if it's the end, towards the end, and I don't mind staying on the same committee. So if it takes retyping this to where safety is at the end, then safety is at the end. Call me Patty if you want, but after almost twenty years of service, and I, the only one that's close to me may be Ray, and I'm not sure how many he's got, I think I deserve to be at the end, or towards the end. And that's just my two cents. When I first started, and Patty, correct me if I'm wrong, you were not on the same committees every two years. You were on different committees every two years. So I've done my fair share of all the committees also. So I don't mind staying on safety, I like safety, but if we need to research, do whatever to get me towards that way, that's fine with me. That's just me, and call it petty if you want, but I think after almost eighteen years of service, I deserve just to have a little bit go my way for a change.
Mr. President? I just have a question. So is everybody on the same committees that you were on last time? Or the same chairs? I will agree with Patty on that. It was always said that you were going to mix them up so everybody can learn how different departments and everything works in the city. I mean, I have no part in that, but if you really want to be a well-rounded council person, I would think you'd want to want to serve on different ones or be chairman. Finance always seemed to stay the same. I'm just talking on past practice. But I know myself, I enjoyed like being on service once and safety once, and I think it gives you a better understanding of how all the departments, especially between safety and service. You know, those are big departments, but I will agree with her on that.
Mr. President?
Mr. Morton?
And I can, I can agree with that, too. I just want to clarify my earlier statement. I don't want us to pick our chair of the committee based off of which seat it's going to put us in up here. I don't think that is doing good service. However, if folks want to switch to chair a different committee, and you have a passion and a rationale to do it, then by all means, I say let's do it. I just, to be blunt, haven't gotten the impression from anyone that anybody wants to switch. But if you do, I think now would be the time to voice that.
All right, let's do this. I will look into, a little deeper into section one twenty-one point one oh. I don't know if, obviously, we're not going to be able to change that ordinance. So I'll come back with some findings, I'll get with the committee on committees, and we'll vote on something next week, and you guys will, you can bring it up. But I'll do the research and find out, because if we have to change that particular ordinance just to move seats, I don't, there's no time to do that. And you can't.
Mr. President? You cannot get with the committee on committees, that's the lawsuit. That's what.
That's, that's why the whole thing was geared towards making it the president.
You cannot meet with those, I'm sorry, it's state.
Okay, then I won't, then you guys look into it, and I'll bring it up for a vote next week at council.
Okay, sorry.
That's all.
We're trying to keep us out of another lawsuit.
That, this is exactly why, it's been done the way it's been done for a hundred years.
Which was against the law.
Whatever, I'm not going there at all, that's fine. Then the committee on committees can. Whatever, I'm not going there at all. That's fine. Then the committee on committees can meet this week,
okay, call them.
And then they can just decide.
But if the committee on committees meet, they have to announce it and make it a public meeting. That is what the whole lawsuit was based on, that we lost. So, let's not create another one.
Mr. President?
Mr. Schultmer?
I, I guess I'll just ask the same thing Connor just asked. Is there anybody that does want to move committees? So, um, I, then if it's appropriate, since I am on the committee committees, I would be happy to address the rules of seating with Valerie, and then, I think, pending that, we can make a decision in the next meeting. Is that fair?
Mr. President, and I didn't want to start anything, but I really don't want to get sued again, and, and I'm, I'm pretty positive they're probably watching, waiting for that, so let's, let's do it right, because it is the law, it is an Ohio sunshine law. And what they asked for, and we agreed to, is exactly what you're doing. Just discuss it on TV so everybody can see. It's, it's really not a big deal, and then just have your committees. That, that's the only thing I said. It's just when we say we're going to, we're going to talk to the other three, that's where we start getting ourselves in trouble.
If, if you, if the committee decides if somebody could get me what the committee assignments are by January 1st, or December 1st, so that I can read it at the inauguration meeting, that would be wonderful then.
Mr. President, I can take the lead on that if you'd like.
Thank you, sir. All right. Then we will move on to reports of administrative officials. Mayor Sutcliffe.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Village of St. Bernard was the recipient of a planning grant from Hamilton County for the Heritage Hill Business District, and has engaged Yarden Company to guide us through the existing process. We're pleased to be able to extend this community engagement portion of the process, and would truly appreciate your involvement by completing the survey, which is available on the village website, and the link is also available on the most recent newsletter. To date, we have had over 50 responses in just a very short period of time, which has been fantastic. Future opportunities for the community will be announced as we value your feedback in this process. We're also asking the wonderful citizens of our community to please sign up for our new notification system. There is a tab on the village website titled Alerts and Notifications. Click on that tab, and it will task you to sign up for both emergency and community-wide events. Currently, the system that we are using has no separation, and if you prefer not to get the on-demand updates, you can opt for the minimal emergency text messages. Lastly, I would like to thank the St. Bernard Police Department for their quick response to a shots fired call in the early hours this morning on Brooman Avenue. One of our officers was able to get a partial plate on the vehicle, and then a complete plate was recovered by camera. The vehicle was stopped in Springfield Township after a BOLO was issued, and the suspects were arrested and charged. Thankfully, there was no one injured after the shots were fired into the building, but with our quick response, the use of modern technology, and the cooperative efforts of mutual aid agencies, these suspects were caught. Again, I couldn't be more proud of our police department, how this was handled. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Utter to Ms. Brickway.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm asking for additional appropriation ordinance to be put on the table for next week. It'll be ordinance 30, 2025, and what this has in there is the tax department got an unexpected refund, so they need another $100,000 in their 2E3. Please remember, they, she cannot predict what different of our, what major companies are going to ask for a refund and not credit it, and so they did this time, so that was a bit of a surprise. Um, and then the other ones are pretty much minor. 2L1 civil service members, $300, I'm not sure what happened there, but it's just a little short. And then for 61A1A, police overtime, they're asking for $50,000. According to the chief, we brought in close to $100,000 in police detail from Vine, from a lot of details, but the bulk of the money is from Vine Street and Mitchell. So, we've been bringing in the money, but I have to pay it out, so it needs to be additionally appropriated. Uh, the fire chief's line item is running low. I think it had to do with some holiday pay for $4,000. Um, I got the quote for our workers' comp for next year, which we pay at the end of this year, and we're about $4,000 short, so four, or, I mean, $5,000, so $5,000 into 0161A. And then, Master Plan 1B, the contracts, contract staff, which is where we pay X-Bex out of, it's running a little low, and I would like to try to get the bulk of their bills paid for this year in case we don't have a lot to carry over, so I was asking for an additional $10,000 in there, hoping I can get their, if he gets me the December bill, I can pay it in December and pretty much close it out. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Schultmer.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance number 30, 2025, on the table for the next meeting.
I'll second it. Motion by Mr. Schultmer, seconded by Mr. Morton, to place ordinance number 30, additional appropriation ordinance on the table for the next meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So ordered. He said that was it, okay. No law director, we did that. Treasure, Ms. Danikam.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Star Ohio account balance as of month end October 2025 is as follows. $10,523,218.89, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Safety and service director, Mr. Wendling.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finishing course of asphalt was applied to Greenlee Avenue today. Over the next several days, the contractor will be applying sealant to the edge of the asphalt where it meets the curb. Residents will need to make alternative parking arrangements until the work is completed. Um, the second speed cushion will be installed on Langley Avenue sometime within the next few weeks. The village will provide notification once we have a definitive date. Capital Electric is in the process of testing the crosswalk signals at Vine and Church and at St. Clement School in Vine due to some recent concerns about their operation. They're also testing the timing of the traffic signal at Vine and Burdice. The Planning Commission met on November the 6th to consider several text amendments to the village's zoning ordinance. The commission's recommendations will be presented for consideration by the, by the village council in December. And the village's, village's IT consultant has completed the process of testing the village's new domain address, and migration to the new domain will commence over the next few weeks. Staff will reach out to you with your updated email address. The current email address will be maintained as an alias, which will enable people who have the current email address to email you as before, and a response will automatically convert to the new email address. The updated domain is St., is stbernard-ohio.gov. The existing .org domain is not specific to government and does not provide the same level of verification, which is the reason for the migration. The .gov domain provides enhanced security, public trust, and official recognition. Using .gov domain also makes it clear to the public that the village's website and emails are legitimate, verified government sources. Finally, it helps to prevent impersonation and phishing attempts. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Any report from the tax, no, okay. We'll move to reports of standing committees. Finance, Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met yesterday to discuss the drafted 2026 budget. I would like to say thank you to Mayor Sutcliffe, Auditor Brickweg, and Safety Service Director Wendling for preparing the budget and for walking the committee through its details. The next finance committee meeting is currently scheduled for December 17th at 6:00 PM in the lower level of City Hall. Uh, we currently plan to have a final committee discussions regarding the budget before it is presented to the new council. Of course, um, this is pending, um, that it works with the committee's schedule. Separately, I would like to thank the county commissioners for hearing the concerns of school districts and other taxing districts like St. Bernard, and refusing to advance with the phony property tax relief known as the homestead piggyback. This saves our school district well over $100,000 in crucial annual funding, so I want to thank them for that. Lastly, I would like to thank everyone who volunteered this past election, whether as a poll worker, or shuttle driver, or a campaign volunteer. Your dedication to our democracy is appreciated. I am proud that the levy in both energy aggregation items passed, and I'm excited to hear a report from Energy Alliance on how they plan to save our residents money on their utility bills. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Service, Mr. Gus Sutcliffe.
Thank you, Mr. President. During the week of November 24th, in observance of Thanksgiving, the trash recycling schedule will be adjusted as follows. Regular trash pickups on Monday and Tuesday, recycling pickups on Wednesday for all residents and businesses. No trash or recycling pickup on Thursday or Friday as City Hall and the service department will be closed for the holiday. Additionally, a reminder about leaf collection. If your leaf piles remain at the curb for more than one day, please be patient with the service department. To prevent bottlenecks on our narrower streets, the leaver operates on the off garbage routes. Because the leaver hose is fixed to only one side, the crew must run each route twice to collect leaves from both sides of the street. This may cause occasional delays, but it ensures that all residents are serviced. Also, residents on Greenlee Avenue are also asked to not place any leaves on the curb or verge at this time. The contractor is completing the final layer of asphalt, and any leaf piles they must remove will delay their work. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Public improvements, Mr. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was no need for a public improvement committee meeting, but I would like to draw attention to a food drive being sponsored by the St. Bernard Elmwood Place School District. Because of ongoing food insecurity and the recent government shutdown, the school district is asking those who can to donate non-perishable goods that will be distributed to those in need. Donations can be dropped off at the high school office at 4615 Tower Avenue, Monday through Friday between the hours of 7:30 and 2:30. A variety of foods that will enable recipients to make a complete meal is appreciated. Donations are currently being accepted and will proceed as need continues. Thank you, Mr. President. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Safety, Ms. Housefield?
Thank you, Mr. President. No report.
Thank you. Laws, contracts, and claims, Mr. Schultmer.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you. Marketing, Mr. Culbertson?
Thanks, Mr. President. St. Bernard's Christmas celebration will be on Saturday, December 6th, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Stop by City Hall to enjoy the following activities. Come watch the tree lighting at 6:00 PM, visit Santa and Miss Claus, and get your picture taken with your own camera, ride the trolleys and participate in the pack light content, light for food contest, visit the petting zoo and listen to Christmas carolers, grab cookies and hot chocolate in the main hall, check out the fresh market on Washington Avenue, and see the high, the Queen City High Railer train display. The next Leto Grove Historical Society meeting will be on Monday, November 17th at 7:00 PM. There will be a World War II program presented by Catling. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Business and industry, Mr. Esteban.
Thank you, Mr. President. There was no business and industry meeting, but I'd like to remind the people that December 11th, we'll have our annual Christmas for needy children at Deagles from 7:00 to 11:00. Admission's $20. It includes your refreshments and food, but we ask that you bring a new unwrapped toy for a needy child, and all the presents stay local. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Culbertson just mentioned the World War II program. I know we're two days after Veterans Day, but obviously, a shout-out and a thank you. Big thank you to all the veterans, St. Bernard and elsewhere. At this time, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address council this evening? If not, I show four ordinances then. Uh, council meeting will be next week because of Thanksgiving, so next Thursday at 7:00 PM will be the council meeting. And I show the four ordinances, um, and as well, we will have the, as was mentioned earlier with the committee assignments, the inauguration of the new, newly-elected council members will be on Monday, December 1st, at 7:00 PM here in council chambers as well. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President?
Mr. Culbertson?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Culbertson, seconded by Mr. Sutcliffe to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.